Good afternoon and welcome everybody to the Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Wednesday, July seventh, two thousand twenty-one. It is one thirty P M. And all members of the court are present, so this meeting is called order. If everyone will please rise to the invocation by Commissioner Young, followed by the third.
Lord, I just want to thank you for today and all of your many blessings. Be with us today as we conduct the business of the county and keep us in your will. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our primary reason for this special meeting today is a budget workshop. We do have some action items to take care of as well. Do you all want to take care of those first and then come back to the workshop? That sound good? Let's get down to item number four. Consider request for authorization to submit the following invoice for payment. Invoice number K R two four one four seven nine and the amount of three thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars and five cents to Kent's Collision Center Incorporated. This is for repair work on a two thousand nineteen Chevrolet Tahoe and number ending in fourteen seventy-nine. And if approved, this invoice will be paid out of line item zero one zero five six zero four six four vehicle mains.
Somebody say.
And motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Young to pay the invoice. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item five, consider approval of request to purchase the two thousand twenty-one Chevrolet Traverse S U V utilizing the Goodbuy Cooperative Purchasing Program. Total purchase price is twenty-nine thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars and seventy-five cents. This will be paid as follows. It'll be two thou- I'm sorry, twenty thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and sixty cents out of line item one eight three five oh three five seven four. The shared federal equitable sharing forfeiture fund auto purchase and eight thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and fifteen cents out of line item zero eight nine five six zero five seven four. Share state drug forfeiture fund auto purchase.
Somebody say.
And motion by Commissioner Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item six, consider authorization of request to increase wages of the Assistant Health Director and two WIC personnel in the Health Services Department to coincide with the new job descriptions approved by Commissioners Court on June eighth, two thousand twenty-one. These wage increases will be fully funded by Health Services and WIC grants without any increase to the county budget, and if approved, will be effective as of June the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. This is a request by Sharon Whitley, the Health Director. Y'all will recall that we approved some job descrip- description changes on June the eighth. There should have also been a spreadsheet in there for some wage increases that was not included. So we're trying to pick that up today to get that included as approval part of that process. We do have that information in this package. If y'all have not seen that already, it should have been emailed to you last Thursday.
Somebody say.
Second.
And motion by Commissioner Cooper, seconded by Commissioner Young. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper.
I think it's important to note, especially for the hearing that we're having today on the budget workshop, the most important thing about this line item is that it is funded a hundred percent by grants, and that's something to take in consideration. And we did this as well here while back with Ms. Whitley on all of her grants. And whenever I met with her and talked to her about it, it was the understanding that I would cast a positive vote for this if it was known that if these grants run out, so is the pay. So we're not increasing the pay out of any county funds, and if the grants run out, so does the pay. So I just wanted to make note of that.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner. And Ms. Mendisobal is here. She can correct me if I'm wrong, but on the payroll change forms, she puts a statement on there to that effect that any of these new positions that come up out of grant funds, that if the grant goes away, then that position goes away as well. She's not correcting me, so that is on there, and Sharon's shaking her head too. Any other discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item seven, consider request for approval to authorize the county judge to sign a professional services contract with Michelle Miller, R D N slash L D, to provide nutrition counseling services for the health- I'm sorry, for the Hardin County Health Services Department and WIC. This is a request by Latasha Jones, Assistant Health Director.
Somebody say.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kirkendall, seconded by Commissioner Roberts. Ms. Jones, we already have a contract with her, but this is an increase of like a dollar an hour or something like that. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's fully funded by your grants.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move back to item number three, budget workshop. Discuss discuss the fiscal year twenty-two budget proposal submitted with additional salary annual operational expenditure requests by the following offices and departments. I have these listed in alphabetical order, but if anybody would like to go first, you're welcome to, and if not, I'll go in order that we have them on the agenda. If anybody wants to go first but needs to go somewhere else or anything like that, or just wants to get it over with, raise your hand. Then we will start with the AgriLife Extension Agent. Lucky you. Yes, ma'am. Come on up, and if you don't mind, just kind of brief the court on your proposal or your request.
Yes, sir. We are looking to hire their full-time or part-time secretary, preferably at being full-time. We have actually seen an increase of fifteen percent in our four H numbers over the past two years since I've been here. Considering it was a COVID year, we're really proud of that. And right now, we have another new chapter or club rather that is starting up, so we're hopeful that we'll have an increase even more than that come follow when everybody starts signing back up. Other than that, if we are granted an assistant, we would like to switch Tammy Goodman as far as a AgriLife title of program assistant, which would just mean that she would be able to sign off on things in the event that I am not there. I've been gone for three weeks between horse show and leadership camp and vet science camp, so having her being able to sign things could be really helpful in that aspect. It would be a change in title for her only, no increase in pay, and that's just what AgriLife accepts as her being able to sign off on things. The other thing would be she would have some travel if we go that option, and we would like to increase our travel budget by two thousand dollars from five thousand to seven thousand. We are running kind of low, and we have not gone full wide open this year. We are also getting a lot of feedback from schools. The T D A is auditing them very heavily on if there is an approved sponsor with a child when they're at an event for the entire duration. Normally, we just go up the day of an event because that's what our budget allows. And that would actually change where I would have to be there for the entire duration with the student. And I know that Gordon Jefferson has already expressed that they would like that. So if we are asking for excused absences from them, we'll have to be there the entire time. We're also getting a lot more kids that are interested and that are going to these larger shows that are outside of just county. I know we have six for the fall, and we have more than our internship for the spring, which is great problems to have. I'm extremely excited about it. The last thing, and again, I'm kind of shooting for the stars here, and hopefully we'll wind up somewhere in the middle, is we would like to increase our office supply line item from nine hundred to a total of two thousand so that we would be able to actually purchase supplies for all the programs that we are trying to do. Vet science definitely being one of them that we could use microscopes for, and this would be hard items that would be considered county on county equipment list. So it would be county property. No consumables at any point. And then to go into the schools, some supplies for that. We would like to put together some trunks that can be loaned out to the schools that if they would like to teach things about wildlife, that we don't necessarily always have to be there if they would like to use those as well. Some of our other programs that would include incubators for egg to chick and everything else. But that's what we have.
Thank you very much. I want to make sure all the Commissioners are aware that I received an email from Candace McKenny, the Assistant Auditor earlier today, and y'all all should have a copy of those in your packets. Should have been right behind your agenda. And so I just want to bring Katie to your attention that Ms. McKenny had found that the total cost on a part-time assistant working twenty-nine hours a week with fringes and everything would be twenty-two thousand three hundred fifty-seven dollars.
Okay.
For a full-time assistant, the cost would be forty-two thousand five hundred ninety-eight dollars. So it's a little different from what you submitted, but it's because she's added the fringes, the health insurance and everything, and I'm sure she also checked it twice, maybe three times.
Absolutely. The one we submitted was salary only, I'm not having all the fringes.
Right. So this is the total for everything. I want to make sure the Commissioners were aware of that and we get it into record. Any comments or questions from the court? Katie, is there any grants from A and M that could be used for any of this?
I will. We have submitted grants for a couple through Texas Farm Bureau. We submit grants each time through the four H Foundation. So far, we haven't got anything, but we continue so that we can at least buy with those, you can get program supplies with them. So that could pay for the incubators and all that, and we're trying. Hopefully, we'll get something.
All right, thank you. What about help from the schools, the actual high schools, school districts?
I don't know about that. Since I'm only considered adjunct faculty, I'm not quite sure that they would deem that. I'm not quite sure how, I guess it would work out financially if they could deem any equipment to us or that we could use or any of that. Because I'm not technically on their payroll or anything, so I'm not quite sure on that one.
Okay. All right, anything else? Anything else you want to say?
We got good problems.
Yes, ma'am, I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the Constables Officers, precincts one through six. Constable Hawthorne is the spokesman.
Well, not completely. I got nominated since I've been around longer, so I think I'm better if they confuse me. So I guess. It's all right now. Do they have a copy of this in their packet that I sent you?
Yes.
Okay. So on the first thing, you know, I just kind of laid out where the salaries for people are, and the percentage on the far right is the difference in the salaries. And while we all have different roles and different responsibilities, we can see where they are. When you go to the second page down in the writing part of it, you'll see that as constables, we're more than ten thousand dollars and twenty-one percent below the next salary of a department head and we're more than eighteen thousand dollars and thirty-four percent behind the next salary of another elected official. And we got here as a group and talked about this and decided that we were going to come to the court and say, hey, do y'all think based on our county's pay scale and the way we do everyone in the county, is this right? Is this where we should be? And so some questions came up, you know, where do you think you should be? And we talked and tried to come up with a figure that's- we don't want to tax the county, we don't want to burden the county, but at the same time, we think we provide a value, and that's what we're looking at here. The lowest figure of anybody in our line of work, whether it be a department head, law enforcement, or an elected official, was that of, I just started right now today for Sheriff Davis. I'm a first-day deputy, and I just walked out of police academy. So that's where we got the dollar difference figure of sixteen percent, which is seven thousand seven hundred eighty-one dollars. That's the difference of what that first-day deputy walks into that just walked out of the academy. Now, so we looked at those numbers, and I was asked several things as I did this. One of the things I was asked is, well, so what all do y'all do? So on the very last page, you'll see calls for service, and this is something through the Sheriff's Office Dispatch. Shows things we've done, but it's not necessarily a true picture. I want to make that clear. Some of y'all know, because y'all were badging it up for a little for quite some time, a public service in that right-hand column is a phone call. So according to that, all six constables from January first of this year to June twenty-fifth, between all six of us, have made one phone call. Now, we all know that's not relevant. I don't know about the others. I can speak to myself that I get calls that start off grabbing at me about the ditch because they think I'm over the ditches and the drainage and everything else, and we have a conversation about who does that, and then I guess they get the call.
I'll transfer those to you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Judge.
And one thing I want to point out, because I don't want there to be any falsehood or anything, in this list, it shows civil process of one hundred and thirteen. Well, that makes that number at the bottom be two seventy. But we've actually served five hundred and eighty-five civil papers, which shows you how often we go out and we pull up a house, and the person's coming out to meet us. I'm not checking, if somebody's coming to my truck, and they're already to me, I'm not checking out. I'm getting out for safety reasons. While I would like to check out, it's safer to me to get out and be in a better position tactically if something happens. So that puts our true number at seven hundred and forty-two documented calls. So, and that's not counting any phone calls, any other things we do. And along that list of things we were asked of, you know, other things we do in other situations, bear with me. The simple things from vacation checks to the daily phone calls with landlords and renters and citizens and judges and attorneys and all of those things that happen every day. Yesterday, I start off my day meeting with a couple that wanted a neighborhood watch program started. That's, you don't list that on a log in where you go take care of your people, just like all y'all go take care of your people. We, there's other things that come up where, like Friday, I think we might have a perception that our constables are these guys that go out and serve a few papers every now and then, and that's the end of the day. And I understand where that perception came from, because we've had some people that, let's be honest, struggled. We struggled to even get them to do that part of the work. But that's not the team of people you have here now. And so my Friday, I'm at the U S Marshals at six A M. in Silsby P D. Went to North Silsby to try to serve felony warrants on a guy they've been looking for, and I ended my day in a multi-county pursuit that ended up in a major wreck in front of Chuff's Barbecue in Jasper County. So I want to make sure the perception is there, the reality of what our jobs entail today. There's other things we do. I know Chris can attest to this. If we have a storm, he's going to get a call way before daylight and say, I'm out. Where do you need me? What roads do you need checked?
That is true.
And so we do those things. Me personally, I'm Operations Chief for the county during emergency management. That's the role I take. We do other things in the community. I've been able to work with Southampton and E S D six, and we're fixing to donate a fire station right there on four eighteen. So that's right about, it's between, we don't have the final figures in, between two hundred and seventy-five and three hundred thousand dollar fire station. There's not a tax dollar attached to it, okay? And so we do these things in our communities to try to help and to try to help the county. So there's other things we do. Some questions have come up, and I want to try to address those. We've, it's been brought up, well, most or all of y'all have other jobs, okay? I'll address that real easily. I mean, personally, I applaud anybody who does that because they want to provide more for their family and make a better way. As long as the two don't interfere with each other, that should be a non-issue. I don't really understand that. I also get told, well, your car allowance is part of your salary. I can say that I could understand if they said it was part of the fringe, but if you do the math, and I think Constable Brothers is going to lay that out there, one, it doesn't cover that, and I'm not up here complaining about that, but my opportunity with that is, if it's part of our salary, I would like our retirement to come out of it also. I think that's a fair statement if you're going to say it's truly part of our salary, that our retirement comes out of it. You know, we're just, we're asking the court, take a look and do a comparison and see if, as a county, your constables are where they need to be as law enforcement, department head, and elected officials. Do the comparison yourself and see if we're where we should be, okay? We, I assure you, no one on that back row right there, if it's any of y'all's job this time of year, probably not any time of the year, but we, this is the process the county has to try to do this, and we felt like it was our time to come up here and speak to this. Any questions for me before I step down? And they may address any questions you have, I don't know, but anything for me?
I don't have any. I will say this, I disagree that, I would say that your car allowance is not part of your salary.
Okay.
How else are you going to pay for a car?
Right.
And the gas and the maintenance and everything else, except you got to have money in your budget to do that.
Sure.
Or the county should provide you one.
Sure.
Honestly, that's what I think, well, I'd be providing those vehicles.
Okay.
Second. But.
We're, yeah, we're more than happy to look at any venue y'all want to send our way.
I just wanted to comment on that.
Sure.
I definitely do not feel that the car allowance is part of your salary.
Okay. All right.
Any other constable want to come up? Constable Jeff Coak?
How y'all doing? Just a quick overview. Since I took over as the constable's over here, we have done a little different job over in precinct four. We actually have a department now since we have the contract with the school district. So I am managing more than just myself. So I have a full-time deputy officially at a second as of hopefully this year when the new contracts is written up this year. So it's, I just wanted everybody to know, it's still a bit different than what we used to in the olden days. It used to be all reserves and one constable, and then they just worked when they could. Now, it's actually a department. So I just wanted to, to know that it's not just going out and serving papers anymore. I'm actually having to run the school district S R O division to help make sure that's managed correctly as per their specs. So just wanted to kind of throw that out if somebody ever knew that. I know Amanda knows a little bit about that, but it's a little bit more difficulty running that now than just the department by itself, so.
What do you find, you know, Constable Hawthorne talked to us about just how much he's involved on his side, and I get to see him a lot, and that's true. How's it going in your precinct?
They're-
Calls me all the time.
I'm with her every, you know, at least once to twice a week for sure, at least, that's a minimum. Usually, we talk about, I got other issues where people park in the roadway, got roads blocked. I'm always getting called on that stuff. Same thing with the school district. I am doing that with the three schools that we have in the county, plus the one we have in Jeth County that we still cover. We have jurisdiction over there. So we're still doing, that's a three or four phone call a day about juvenile. So it's just, it's just ramification enough, and it's keeping us busy. Even though I have a secondary source of income like we all do, I go in and get my crew running in the morning, and I'm back in the county by noon. And I'm working from noon home until dark.
Yeah.
So, and I'm out about a hundred or a hundred yards of wood all the way up west county. And plus, I'm helping, you know, I'm the second officer out there for Saturday when they get called, so. And it's been proven in fact, and the sheriff needs help where he is covering, helping him out. He can't be everywhere. So we're trying to pick up some of the slack, but he does a great job as a, I know he's just an assistant source. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I apologize, I'm not as prepared as Constable Hawthorne, wanted to hit an email. Y'all have a copy of this, but I did make copies for y'all to pass me.
All right, thank you.
This is just about the car allowance. Just some basic estimates on what it costs to operate a vehicle and what we actually spend. And that bottom line is probably a very conservative estimate, the thirteen thousand about what it costs us to operate a vehicle a year. I know I only put on there that you fill up four times a month, and I'm certain that it's much more than that, but I wanted it to be conservative. What we spend to help out with the county, help make our job better, easier, provide better service for the citizens that elect us. We spend a lot of money on equipment for ourselves. I think as a whole, that should be considered also, you know. We don't come asking for money for that equipment, but, you know, we do it so that we can better serve. The cost for the car is just ever increasing, you know? And the ten thousand dollars is gone probably, I'd say within the seventh or eighth month, you know, realistically. And then we get into our salary to operate. So it's just kind of a breakdown of that, just estimates. Don't have any questions about that answer.
We're not sure what we're going to do this budget, but, you know, for the future, would you rather have a county vehicle or a raise?
Honestly, sir, I've not looked at both sides of it. I really don't.
That'd be something maybe to talk about, maybe, even if it's not this budget, maybe a future budget.
Yes, sir.
I'd rather not have a county vehicle. I think y'all will know that one.
Thank y'all for your time.
I just want to say for the record that you've got the total year of the car vehicle cost estimate is thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Yes, sir.
And you'll get ten thousand a year.
Yes, sir.
And taxes come out of that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Everybody agree that's about what you pay annually on a car? Give or take a little bit?
Give or take, yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't. Thank y'all for your time, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Anybody else? Go on, Watts. I just want to say that I don't, if y'all were expecting a decision to be made today, I don't think that's going to happen. But we will have at least one more budget workshop, and I anticipate that hopefully there'll be a decision made by then, and then it won't, that it won't be a judge you decide on any of this. But the proposed budget is something I put together. I have a responsibility to file that with the county clerk by five P M. on July the thirtieth. I have always involved the Commissioners in that because it does not make any sense for me to propose a budget that they're not going to agree with. So between now and hopefully at the very latest, July the twentieth, give or take a few days, I would like to have the feedback from the Commissioners on what they do or do not want to see in that proposed budget. And whenever that happens, I will make sure, I would imagine it'll happen in a setting like this, and if not, then I'll reach out to you and let you know what's been decided. I would not want you to get a proposed budget and that we haven't at least discussed it a little bit. But I don't think a decision's going to be made today. We want to hear what everybody has to say, sleep on it at least a night or two, and then we'll have another budget workshop either next week or the following week. And we'll decide that day here in just a little bit. Anything else from the constables?
Appreciate your time.
Thank y'all. We appreciate y'all. I'll tell you this, it's nice to have six working constables again.
Yeah.
We haven't had that in a little while. So, nice to have it. Next is the county auditor. Ms. Gore is at a conference this week and could not be here. She told me that, and I still put her on the agenda anyway because she said she might come by Zoom. But if nothing else, I wanted to make sure that the Commissioners had the information from the auditor and had time to evaluate that, just like they would all of the other requests that are being made. And that request is for a five percent raise for three of the assistant auditors. And I don't remember the percentage of raise, but a higher percentage for another assistant auditor. I want to say it's around eleven or twelve percent. Sorry that I don't have that ready for you today, but you do have the amounts here on this worksheet. And Angela said that the budget will remain the same, she's just moving some money there, is that right? The, well, the salary increases would come from revenue. The one person that she's wanting to increase more, there is some money that the adult probation department gives her each year, and Kevin's not here, but Kevin said that money would cover that, and he would be glad to let that cover that because that assistant auditor handles his grants for him, audits his grants for him. But we will discuss this with Ms. Gore when she's here at the next workshop. Dee is the county attorney. Mr. Minnick, you want to come up and just kind of talk to us a little bit about your proposal?
Good afternoon. I will be real quick, really, my budget only increases two main things. One will be an increase in some salaries for some of my clerks in the front. When the state supplement comes in, I am going to have to give up about ninety-six hundred dollars back to my office. The salaries that I'm asking for increases will be covered by that. So actually, it'll be no additional money. It'll be from my supplement that I have to give up from the state. So it looks like the numbers that I've gotten from Angela's office will be about ninety-two hundred dollars, and I'm going to have to most likely give up about ninety-six hundred. So I'll still end up having to give four hundred dollars up from my supplement, but that will cover the increases I'm requesting and the salary increases to my clerks. There's also an increase from my pre-trial aversion fund that I also have from money coming into my office. Looks like we are continuing to have an increase in that budget, and I've got to spend that money. So I'm asking for an increase from that as well, but that is also money that comes into our office for administration of the pre-trial version fund. So that's no additional funds to y'all as well. It's all going to come in from my budget, actually.
Makes it easier for us.
The only other increase that I have on my entire budget is the CPS defense attorney's fees. I didn't know if y'all wanted to address that today or not. It's just, it's just continuing. I just, I don't want to go over it again like I did last year. The CPS has gotten way out of hand here in Hardin County. We're doing the best we can, but I know right now we're at two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. We're not even at- We're not even at the end of the year yet. And, um, I think the budget's for two hundred thousand, so I put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. My hope is by twenty twenty-three that our CPS load will be lessened a little bit. The standard from the state of Texas for removal of children has gotten much higher. It's a much higher burden coming September first. Now, mind you, that doesn't help us now because we still have cases for a year up until that date. So by twenty twenty-three, I, I hope, or at least anticipate that our CPS case load will be decreased slightly. Um, but of course that's not going to help us with this budget at this time. But I anticipate it's going to be about the same again for a year. It's, we had, when I first got here, I think we had maybe thirty or forty kids in care and now we have probably a hundred and twenty. So.
Is it called ad lib? When a, when attorney steps in for a kid, what's that called?
The, uh, attorney ad libbing for the child. You have attorney ad libbing for the child fees and you have attorney fees for the parents. Uh, and then you also pay for a guardian ad libbing who is, uh, within the best interest of the child.
And all of that comes out of this?
Yes.
Yeah. What do you estimate per case?
Oh, I can't give you that exact figure. I know it's about, depends on the fee, you know, you get paid a hundred dollars for certain hearings and things like that. But I mean, you know, remember we're in court every other week all day and these attorneys are just waiting on the docket calls. And so now we've gotten to the point where we might even get out of court until seven, eight o'clock at night sometimes.
And so if they're sitting there waiting, we have to compensate them, don't we?
Matt, during the pandemic, did y'all continue?
Yes.
Zoom?
Yes, we, uh, only were out for about maybe two weeks, two or three weeks, we, we reset cases.
I guess the reason why I ask that, uh, well, you've already answered that question. You've used a budget for the year of the pandemic.
For, for, yeah.
We didn't save any money.
No. You took, yeah, you're talking about from how much we're paying the attorneys?
Yeah.
No, yeah, we're, we're already over it and I anticipate going quite a bit over it again.
Thank you.
I'm just going to add that, uh, Mr. Minnick and I and Judge Stover and Judge Lockwood, Judge Lockwood handles the CPS docket met. I don't remember when it was now, but it's been a while back. And Judge Lockwood does know that we are asking to have these costs reduced, however he can do that. So in other words, if an attorney submits a bill and he thinks it's too high, he, he can, he can slash it.
And, yeah, and just to add to that, we were, we, we did some digging, we spent a lot of time on it. We went through every single attorney's, um, sheets and their bills and we came to the conclusion that one or two of them were probably overcharging a little bit. And that's been addressed now and that shouldn't be happening anymore.
Just wanted to make sure the court was aware and, and everybody here in the public that Judge Lockwood, Judge Stover, Mr. Minnick, and even most of the defense attorneys know that this has gotten out of hand and they are trying to keep a lid on it the best they can, but it still just keeps growing. One, one thing that Judge Lockwood, uh, had talked about, I don't guess it's been implemented yet, was maybe trying to figure out a way where an attorney is not sitting here all day, maybe have them set to come at a certain time. So if he could ever do that, that would be helpful, I think. But I know it's not ea, it's easier said than done.
Well, your issue is, is that we have the same wheel of attorneys and they just get rotated. So if you're the attorney for the parent in this one, the next case right behind it, you very well could be the attorney for the child or you could be the attorney for another parent. And we really only have maybe six or seven attorneys that rotate around that are the same attorneys. And so they have to be there most likely all day because of the rotation.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next is the county clerk. Mrs. Austin, how are you?
I'm just fine, thank you. Uh, the only, I'm asking for, uh, an increase in my office supplies from seven thousand to eight thousand. And, uh, let's see. And on my printing for four thousand to five thousand.
Are you anticipating having more printing next year?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, because, yeah, our birth certificate paper is, you know, we have to, right now, we're, we have been, I have been, like, um, when we order from Scott Merriman, like a five hundred dollar setup fee every time we order paper. But, oh, I was talking to, uh, Candace a few minutes ago and she was talking about maybe making a line item for different, you know, like, things to come out of. And we normally take out a miscellaneous that we could maybe put it over in the office supplies. And so that would be, um, but yeah, I mean.
Well, that was in your election budget?
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, same thing we need to do even with, uh, in the general, um, the office supplies for the office. But, um, yeah, we, I mean, still realize we have, we may have a, uh, ribbon, you know, going out in the, like, one of our, uh, um, printers or something like that. I mean, it's just, it's just, uh, expense sometimes you don't know that you're going to have. And that's like, I've almost used everything and I need, um, four, four scanners in the office now. And you have to have those to run the office.
Right.
So, I mean, that, I, I don't think a thousand dollars on each one of those is very much to ask for, for all the extra expense that we have. So.
But I'm sure with the growth of the county, growth of your services is going to.
Yeah. And, uh, that's all on, on my, um, the office other than my elections.
Yes, and I got a revised election worksheet from Alyssa earlier.
Yes.
And that should be in your packets as well.
Yes.
Uh, the, why don't you tell us, uh, what you mentioned the other day about the branch early voting is going to, you're going to be able to decrease that because of the change in the law?
Yeah, we only need to have at least two days of branch early voting. If you're going to have it. Normally on, uh, uh, constitutional amendment election, we do not have branch. But since there is, um, um, the E S D is having, uh, uh, an item on the ballot, um, the tax bond down in Lumberton. So anyway, we're going to have it this time. So, uh, but you only have to have it for two days. You don't have to have it the whole two weeks, but you do have to have it for two days. And, um, we've always used the Assembly God Church in Silsby. They charge two hundred and fifty dollars a day. And then, then I checked with, uh, Chamber of Commerce and they were going to charge us seven hundred and fifty dollars for three days. Two days of early and one day election day. So we talked to Z.
That's at the, uh, community center? That's what they were going to charge for that?
Last year we didn't pay very, very much. But Deanne, um, we talked to her and, um, she said that we could use the, where, uh, CS Silsby used to be. Is that on the, on the back street there? Is that the place, place they do that? It wouldn't cost us anything. So, uh, I'm going to go look at it next week. So that would save us some money.
All right. But the, the information I sent you the other day included, uh, what she had originally submitted because she didn't, she didn't know about the law change. Uh, you know, a couple of years ago, the law changed where every day they had early voting here. If she was going to do branch early voting anywhere, it had to be the same amount of day. But now that's changed and we have to have it two days.
Two days.
So that's been revised and it should be what you have in your package now.
And then, you know, there for a while they were talking about maybe having fifteen days early voting. But right now they, it's ten. But they said that could change.
Right. Yeah, that's just a suspicion. Right. All right.
But that's basically all, Judge.
Thank you, ma'am. Any comments or questions from the court? All right, if not, uh, we'll move on to the next one. The next one is the district attorney and she is not available this week either. The, uh, primary request from, uh, Mrs. Walton is to pay a supplement. It is, uh, something that, uh, we did not pay the previous district attorney, but she is requesting that she has paid a county supplement and it would be equal to the amount that's paid to the district judges, which is eighteen thousand. And the only other increase was the, uh, increase to the wireless phones or wireless devices in her office. Yeah, this is wireless phone. And nineteen hundred and fifty-two dollars. But again, we will, uh, ask her to join us at our next workshop to, to present that in person. On the supplement, is that, uh, uh, is that a salary? It would be a, uh, yeah, be part of, part of the salary, correct? And that's the same amount that we paid a few district judges, eighteen thousand each.
You may get five thousand for juvenile board and then, um, the rest of things.
Well, there's a county supplement, each one of them gets eighteen thousand each. And so that's what she would.
Yeah, and I think that supplement.
The way the law reads, either pay them zero or the same as the highest paid district judge.
That supplement is split. I don't know a lot about it, but three thousand dollars, I know it says it's juvenile, it's a juvenile board supplement, so I don't know.
So it may be off on that.
It was fifteen and thirty.
Okay. But we'll have all that ready for the next workshop. Next is in emergency management, the disaster recovery director has requested an increase in pay to sixty-five thousand annually. And there's a memo here that she wrote to me, uh, justifying that, uh, increase. I'll agree with everything she says in here. Everything that she says she does, she does. And, uh, has helped a whole lot of people recover from disaster and continues to do that. But she is out on vacation this week and I told her we would, uh, table that and bring it back up at the next workshop when she can attend. Item H, we can strike that one. Judge Ames sent me an email this morning and withdrew his request for any increase. Next is, uh, Justice of the Peace Precinct Six. And, uh, she called the office this morning while I was in court, Judge Warner did. And, uh, indicated to, uh, Ms. Wines that we could go ahead and, and discuss this without her, that she couldn't be here today. And she did send us memo. Asking for an increase in rent due to, due to increase in property taxes, repairs and insurance. Is there not a public building that we could rent? I'm not sure. Are you aware? I'm not aware of any in that part of the, of anywhere in that precinct. The, uh, request for increase is from seventy-two hundred dollars annually to seventy-eight hundred dollars annually. Wasn't there also an increase in internet? Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, I can't tell. Looks like it's only.
It's more than four dollars.
How much?
Four oh four.
Total increase for internet? Is that what we're paying Candace?
Uh, actually, we are paying, well, ninety-one dollars a month, which is a thousand ninety-two dollars annually.
Okay. And it looks like she, she's requested it to be one thousand, one oh four? Yes, sir. So that's not four hundred, is it?
Well, from seven hundred, what, I think seven hundred from her current budget to eleven oh four.
The, the request is a four hundred and four dollar increase. Okay. But she's going to go over this year anyway. Yeah. So we do need to look at adjusting that. Next is the purchasing department. Ms. Sims want to come up? Well, she, we should just skip this department here. All right. Ms. Sims?
I'm requesting a pay increase for Stacy Eckert. She started in October the first of two thousand eighteen. She makes thirteen dollars and fourteen cents an hour. Um, I believe, I don't think this has ever been evaluated since that position was created as a part-time position many years ago. Um, Stacy's trained and able to do all the duties of an assistant and she does them very efficiently. She, uh, has attended emergency management training and helped in E O C. during the COVID pandemic. And she's also attended, um, purchasing conference with me. Um, so I just, she's worth more, she's a huge asset to me and, um, I'd like to get one increase.
When you, uh, and I realize you weren't the purchasing agent then, but when that part-time position was created, that person only, uh, answered the phones and did what else?
And did the mail and, um, helped people when they came in asking for supplies and whatnot. Stacy does everything that, um, Erica does as an assistant. She fills in, they swap, you know, they fill in for each other when one's on vacation and whatever. They're a little busier and that kind of thing and I help out, but, um, she's cross-trained too.
Any questions or comments from the court? Thank you, ma'am. I think we should take it out of juvenile budget. There we go. Next is, uh, the sheriff. Good afternoon, sheriff. And, uh, Candace, is he aware of this information you've sent to us?
No, I haven't had time to talk to him.
So I want to make sure.
It's not that much.
It's not a big deal. She came up with four hundred and forty-three dollars that she was off in your original figures that she gave to you.
You're fired.
So I want to make sure you know that.
To the good or to the bad?
Oh, what do you think?
Of course. So, uh.
She was doing her triple check and found.
I got you, I got you. Well, she hasn't been busy, so I don't know what the problem was there, but. All right, so we're, uh, we're back on the drawing board again to try to increase the staffing in the nine one one dispatch center. This is a cost share position, meaning that it's split between, uh, various cities that use us for dispatch services along with, uh, a couple of E S Ds that use us for dispatch services. The, uh, the dollar amount roughly, uh, sixty-eight, nine, sixty-eight is the cost, including fringes for a, a beginning dispatcher. Of that, uh, sixty-eight, nine estimate, the breakdown on, on how we're doing our cost share, uh, provided a, a cover sheet that's got some percentages on there. If you look at that, the county's portion of that, of any cost share dispatcher is, uh, is roughly forty-two percent. So we're going to be looking at an increase of twenty-nine thousand and some change as the county's portion of that position. Um, and then the various other, uh, increases to the other cities and E S Ds would make up that difference for a complete total, uh, for the, for the, uh, salary infringes of sixty-eight, nine. We're, uh, we're, we're overworked and understaffed. We're going to continue to be that way as the county goes. The dispatch center is just unbelievably busy. Uh, it is just non-stop. And so we roughly have seven dispatchers and one supervisor for total of eight. It's hard to work a two dispatcher schedule with seven, uh, dispatchers with that odd number. It's hard to give us two around the clock coverage. By adding that other person, that's going to give us an even number. We'll have eight to work with, which is going to increase us because we still have times that we have one dispatcher in that office. And I'm just being blunt with you, that's just not acceptable. We can't continue that way. There's times where we're holding people over, we're calling people in early. Uh, the call load is tremendous and it's only growing more and more and more. And it's, uh, it's just to the point where, you know, we're like everybody else, we could use three more or four more or five more. Uh, and their job in there is so stressful. It's so hard to hire someone for that position that's qualified, that can put up with the stress level. Uh, I put it up there with the stress level of any position in the county. It's just that busy and it's that stressful. With the increase, uh, I've talked with the E S Ds, I've talked with the cities. We're trying to work in the direction of having a medical triage capability, uh, for the EMS calls that, that we handle, which is the Lumberton Response Area and the Sower Lake Response Area. We're actually supposed to be triaging those cops, trying to get as much information as we can. The patient's age, any pre-existing conditions, what's going on at the time, any current meds, and feeding that information to that EMS unit that's responding to give them more information. If it's a transfer call for the areas of the county that don't have any S D, EMS, so it'll be, uh, a lot of the west county or the north county, those are rolled over to one of the private EMS companies and they then will triage the medical portion of that call. And also when there's an active fire, when you. And also, when there's an active fire, when you've got fire against home scene, they need things, they're, they're able to call back to a dispatcher and go, hey, I need energy or sheco out here to cut the power, hey, I need uh, uh road commissioners to come out because we've got a structure of a tree that's falling on the road. Uh so there's still some interaction, what we're trying to do by adding this uh personnel is to give the E S Ds and the fire a little bit more attention, uh that's gonna help them out on the scene because she's trying to split her time between the law enforcement and the officers and the traffic stops and the calls for service and the disturbances and she's not able to stay tuned to that EMS and that fire call as much as what she needs to be. We've realized a lot of that through our quality control and we're doing our assessments on how do we get better, how can we do things better for the E S Ds and the EMS? And so uh that's what's led us to say we're behind, we're just understaffed, we've gotta have more people to provide the, the right level of service to, to the fired E S Ds. Calls were up, uh you've heard we use a number of about fifty-six thousand, give or take calls for service uh is what we've gone through in the last twelve months after the last calendar year. That was down a little bit because of some COVID, uh we've seen an increase that's come back and it's come back with a vengeance. And when we're running calls, uh this summer has been unbelievable, uh a huge increase, year-to-date over what we were this time last year and even the year before. The uh, that's the, that's kinda the spin justification in wanting to add that and what the county's portion would be. Um if I could move from that into, to two other things that I wanna call your attention on, number one is there's some discussion about clerk pay, uh if you'll notice, I'm not asking for any increase anywhere in my budget as far as the operational expenditures, um equipment and supplies and, 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 and those things. Um we found a way to crunch and make that work, I've left that the same, I'm not asking for anything. We are inherently gonna have an increase on the salary because of the way step schedule works out. You've got those employees that will get another year's service and maybe entitled to something, or maybe they've got a, a state certificate that's gonna increase their, their certification pay. But the operational expenditures uh for both the jail and the law enforcement side, I'm not asking for an increase in any of those. But I would ask that as you hear the discussions from the other department heads and, and clerks, and we're talking about clerks and everybody that has a clerk, I'm seeing a trend that's giving me a little bit reason to, to pause. I would like to, to call your attention and tell you that we're, we're, we're beginning to get out of kilter and some non-consistency with our clerk pay throughout the county. Whether it's a clerk in one department or a clerk in another, um there's beginning to be a disparity there. And I have one of the lowest paid clerks uh in the county. Um I really think that we need some consistency, if we're gonna call a person a clerk, then there needs to be a ba- a base pay for that clerk and I think it needs to be consistent and fair throughout the whole, throughout the whole county. What we're, what we're starting to see is individual department heads, and I get that, that's their job, that's my job, is to come and, 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 and advocate for the benefits and the best that I can get for my employees, but also wants to be consistent and it's tough when, when one of us have a clerk in our department and we're looking at a clerk in another department and there's, there's a big disparity, uh in some cases, two or three or four dollars an hour difference. Um and I just don't think that's the direction that we as a county should be going in.
Would that be based ju- uh sheriff on uh years of service?
Well, it's not supposed to be because there's no, there's no allowance for that in the pay scale.
Well, what I'm, what I'm asking.
But the reason, the reason that's out of kilter is because at one time it was years of service pay, because last year we dealt with this on the J P secretary. We had a J P get mad at us because his clerk didn't get a raise when she was already here because she'd been here longer. And we brought everybody in line along with what you're saying and I see your point, but you got two sides there, you gotta look at, you gotta weigh it out, you know, you have a.
Well, for instance, like if you have a clerk who's been here ten years and they've, they've gotten raises throughout those years, they're gonna be at a higher wage than a, someone that was hired on two years ago. And I don't know how you could ever make that.
There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be, because everybody gets a cost of living raise, so that base salary goes up every year.
Well, I mean, unless we don't get. No, what I'm saying, why should a two-year clerk make what an experienced eight or ten-year clerk should make? Why should they make the same?
I, I agree, but there's no provision in our pay scale at the county for that, what you're saying.
I've got an operator.
There's just a, there's just a level one, two or three clerk.
I've got an operator right now.
It doesn't sound like years of service.
That has been here twenty years and he makes more than my former.
Right.
Because at one time we did have that.
Yes.
We don't now, you're right.
Yeah.
But at one time we did, that's why.
But I think most of us are pretty good about bringing in somebody new and not paying them what somebody who was working here twenty years was making.
Yeah.
I mean, I just replaced the floodplain administrator with a new one and, and he's not making what she was making.
Right, but what sheriff's saying, that's not fair, right?
Well, I'm just saying, do we need to take a look at making some different classifications for our clerk? To make that allowance, yeah, it's not fair.
Well, for instance, if you take the last five years and you've given an average of three percent raise, that's fifteen percent. So with someone who's hired tomorrow, there should be a fifteen percent difference. Cause you have a starting pay and then you have a, 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 an experience pay where you get the raise. And then it's, it will bust the county budget if you try to bring in, if I'm interviewing and I look at my operators and I look at someone who's been there six years and I try to bring in that brand-new operator at that six-year experience, it demotivates the guy that's been here for six years, gives him no incentive. And then, then the guy here, then what that does, that increases my budget not from a, a starting pay, right? Cause like a starting pay for um precinct two and uh as an operator is about seventeen dollars an hour. Alright, a dollar more than what most clerks are making to operate equipment. Alright, and so a six-year is gonna be at like nineteen dollars an hour. But they've been here and they've gotten those raises. And so I think there is a starting pay when you hire in a clerk and it's their first year in the county, even coming with experience.
But we're giving a cost of living raise to that base pay every year.
Yes.
So it, it continues to rise, it's not like it stays.
Not the base pay, no, you're, you're paying for experience.
I beg to differ, yes it is.
You're paying for experience.
Everybody's getting that cost of living raise, every position is getting that.
Well, but people hired in September in the county will get a raise in October.
Right.
And I don't know any civilian jobs where you get a raise after one month, where you're guaranteed that. If they hire in September the thirtieth at fifteen dollars an hour, uh October the first, they're making fifteen fifty, working one day.
My, my raise is not the issue, my issue is the consistency when we call and we classify an employee as a clerk one or a clerk two or a clerk three.
I don't think we have those, do we? I think the sheriff does.
The sheriff does, because he's on.
And, and according to our budget on the wages pages, there's others in the county too that are classified as that.
They're clerks for that department, I mean, they're clerks for that particular department and I think that's like duties for one department, for a clerk in one department are gonna be a little bit different than duties for a clerk in maybe another department.
Right, sheriff, are you talking about the one clerk, there's one clerk in your department is way lower than most of the rest? I think you have the same situation that Misty has where she was, that person was part-time at one time and didn't really have a lot of duties and then it became full-time and now has a lot of duties and possibly needs to be looked at, but I do agree, we do have some others going on.
I just, I just think the consistency, cause I keep hearing the different eight, different departments and talking about the clerks and I, and I think, I think there needs to be a a salary that's assigned to a clerk one or a clerk two or a clerk three, if we're gonna use those job descriptions and titles. Um I just think there needs to be something consistent, uh and, and I don't see that now.
Well, we're past due on doing a, having a, a good uh review or evaluation of the salaries throughout the county. I had intended uh to get a committee together to look at that and.
We've been saying we were gonna do it for.
For two years, at least.
For two years.
And so uh, and I didn't, I dropped the ball on that, but I'm gonna work on that. I'd like uh Lemon to head that up and I'd like for you to serve on and I'd like to get at least two or three more people to work on that. Of course, we're too late to do it this year, but that'll give y'all plenty of time to work on it for the next year, it'd be good.
Yeah, it's, you know, when I've got a sergeant who makes more than my number three major, we've got issues with the pay scale.
I definitely see where you come from and, and you're right when you say that, but I guess the point I was trying to make, the reason why it's the way it is is because at one time we did have step.
Yeah, that's correct.
And that's why it's out of kilter now.
That's what.
My operator that's up here, every time he gets three percent raise, it's a lot more than the one that's way down here, cause he's making more money.
Oh, I agree.
So it, it creates a bigger gap because you're giving like a three percent across the board, you're giving a three percent, somebody's making higher than three percent.
But your base operator pay, that goes up, whatever that cost of living raises every year too. And, and so whether it's a base operator at your precinct or a base first day on the job operator at your precinct, if they're both operators and they're doing the same kinda work, I would think they'd make the same job, you know?
Okay, so with that, and this is an honest question, what incentive for longevity do you have?
I, I don't know that you do until you come up with a way to classify that operator as a one, a two or a three. Yeah. And that, and that was why, in the court's wisdom, fifteen, eighteen years ago, there was a pay scale on the law enforcement side for that very reason. A deputy was a deputy, it might have been here a year, twenty years.
There are a lot of incentive for the certificate pay, but mine could say longevity because you have to have so many years, but you know, that's.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem in the world because I, and I think, you know, one of the things I'm up against is, is hiring, I can't do anything to, to entice uh an employee, whether he's a twenty-year FBI agent retiree or a first-day-out police academy deputy, they make the same amount of money, they come to work for me.
Yeah.
And so I'm never going to get that, that ultra-certified, qualified person because I can't, I, I, there's no incentive, I can't bring him in at a level two or a level three. You know, and I don't know if y'all, if y'all on the road bridge side have the ability or if you do that, um but, but I don't on my side, so uh that, that's tough and that's one of the things that we've been saying for two years, we, you know, we were gonna look at that. Um we're the only, we're the only L E agency in the county that doesn't have that option. Everybody else can bring in an officer based on his years of experience.
A lot of those things too, merit pay or whatever you might wanna call it, would be in lieu of the county giving a three percent raise overall. And we've been doing away with that, now I don't know what you face there is that you have merit raise and you have a department head that has an info on their employees, they're not, they're not gonna be getting no raise, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
There are pros and cons to both sides.
And it works the other way too, where you have some department heads just give to everybody.
Everybody.
That's true, yeah, that, that, you're exactly right, you're exactly right.
I think I'm gonna make everybody mad.
Yeah.
The, the step, the, the step is good in theory, um but the problem is, one of the inherent problems with that step is you have, you have so upper-level management, executive management that's making less than a first-line supervisor. And, and that's, I mean, that's just, that's asinine, there, there's no other way to explain that, you should never have.
A paramilitary structure.
Yeah, you, you should never have, right, even if it's fifty dollars more, there should be a clear delineation in there between one pay grade or one salary position and the next.
I completely agree.
Um but again, we didn't get that way overnight, we're not gonna solve it overnight, it might take us a couple of years to phase something like that in. Uh starting on my end and working a little bit at the time each budget year until we get there. But we're so overdue on making a, making a salary survey and, and looking to see, um you know, I, my number two person in the whole department, he supervises, directs indirectly seventy-five people and he makes less than every sergeant in every agency in this county. I mean, that's, that's crazy, I mean, I, I'm not here today gonna have more salaries because again, we didn't get there overnight, it's gonna take us a while to figure that out. But when a patrol sergeant is Sylvia Ronson who supervises two or three guys, makes more than a chief deputy who supervises directly indirectly seventy-five people and he makes less, sometimes ten and eleven thousand dollars less a year, that's just not right. Um we, we owe our employees, especially those in responsible management positions, we owe them better than any. And, and so I think, again, that, that's not my fight today, but I wanna bring it to your attention to say we've got to sit down, we keep saying every year we're gonna do it. We've gotta sit down and make some inroads across all of the positions in the county, not, not just in, in my department. But take a look at everything that's there and, and either reclassify because of changing in job duties, you know? Um or, or look at, at salary surveys on where we are compared to the others. The last thing is, is to, to bring your attention as a reminder with the, with the revenue that's generated, you know, we're, we've had the low tour bill to house some out-of-county inmates. We, the, the L E side, the jail side, we don't see that money, that's revenue that comes to the general fund, uh and, and right as of. But please take into account that, that we're housing inmates because I've approved that, there's nothing that says I have to. Uh I can sit back and say, I'm not housing any inmates. Um hundred and twenty to hundred and fifty thousand a year in revenue that comes to your general fund. Um that doesn't come for me to spend, that doesn't come in my budget, and again, rightly so, it, it should go under the general fund. That's, that's, there's some reasons behind that. Um but again, that's, that's revenue that's coming in. Um that's, that's because of me, uh this is where I took my own horn, I tell you, I've agreed to do that, there's nothing that says I have to, there's nothing that says I should and a lot of counties don't, we're fortunate that we've had the bed space to be able to do it. But that's a combined effort between the prosecutors and the judges and probation and parole, we've worked to tr- together to try to get that count down. Um it could change, it could go back up and we've gotta have those beds for our own prisoners. But uh, but that's a good chunk of revenue that's coming into the, to the general fund every year that, that again, for uh, for us to start looking at trying to make some salary adjustments, trying to, trying to get our pay up a little bit. Um our, our man劳工pay is so far behind market average right now, it's, it, and we're falling further and further and further. We're doing two and three percent cost of living raises and everybody around us are doing more. And they started out more than they're doing more. Um so I just, I think there's, there's a couple of things that we need to look at, but please don't lose sight of the fact that that I'm doing all I can on my end to try to generate as much revenue with what I have worked with in the jail. Um and that's a good chunk of money that comes in and, and again, we're estimated that to continue as long as we've got the beds available to do that.
Let me ask you this, sheriff, if I just jump on the line when you said that about you made the decision, uh you could say no. Uh would it benefit the county as well as your department if we privatized that jail?
No.
And whose decision would that be, if we wanted to privatize?
That's the commissioner's court's decision.
And you don't think it'd benefit the county financially?
No. I think the, I think you'd have to look at it two different ways, I think you'd have to look at the service that you're gonna provide to the families of the inmates who are in jail.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and I think that will be lacking and I base that on what I've seen in other jails that are privatized. Liberty County was private for a long time, they went back to county-owned, operated and managed since past October one. So they're, they're coming in now on their first, towards the end of their first twelve months, back in the business of, of running their county jail. Uh the problems that they were having with security, uh the availability of getting inmates to court and getting them there on time and, and having a backlog and having district and county judges waiting because the inmates were supposed to be there that morning and they didn't have, uh they didn't have the staff for whatever reason to transfer them over into the court. The family members who had issues with, with, I can't get in on visitation or it's never right or I can't, the mail's not right, there was, there was just so many inherent problems because there was no customer service. And, and I would, I would tell you I would be against that. Um I don't think the amount of money, uh and I, and I'd have to look on whether or not it would be a cost savings, but I don't think the amount of money would justify the dip that I'm afraid we would see in, in the conditions and the service that would, would go on in that county, in that county jail. To the contrary, I, I think uh you could make a very active, very active argument with, with additional jail space and/or a new jail. Um the finances that it, the revenue that it would generate. Everybody around here is begging for places to put inmates, every county jail is overpopulated except us. If you remember, we almost got there two years ago and we really sat down and had a lot of, of give and take with the judges and probation and even the defense department, uh trying to come up with a better way to reduce that population, to move our cases through. And, and I think we all did a really good job, uh the outcome was wonderful, we were able to drop that population down. Um and so we are the, we are the go-to agency right now.
I don't know if you was on the phone call or not, the last inspection, I, I guess it was the last inspection of Scott. The judge was busy, so I sat in on the phone call, I don't know if you was involved in it or not, and the inspector said we need to uh address the third floor.
Mm-hmm.
At some point in time.
Yeah.
What, what, what's the population there right now, on, on that section?
Uh it generally runs thirty to fifty. Um we try not to ever bring it over forty-eight, uh because I've gotta put a second jegger on that floor if I go over forty-eight. So we try to keep it at forty-eight or under, so that only one jegger has to be on that floor a minimum uh at any one time. Um so quite honestly, those, those sales uh, it needs to be decommissioned, it's a money pit. Uh judge can tell you better than anybody, he sees the vouchers. The judge can tell you better than anybody. He sees the vouchers for maintenance. Um, it's nineteen-fifties model jail and the infrastructure is horrible. Uh, the water pressure, the running water, the heat, uh, everything about that is, it was bad when I worked there in nineteen eighty-six. And, and it really hasn't got much better. The only thing that's been done since then is we added air conditioning.
Yeah.
And.
Took out the kitchen.
And took out the kitchen, yeah. But, uh, yes, uh, he is correct. We really need to look at, but the problem is I can't, I don't have enough beds to totally decommission it one-hundred percent and then add that over there. And if I add the, those prisoners back to the first-level jail, um, that's pretty much gonna take everything we've got for, for bed space. So there'll be no revenue coming in and we'll be, we'll be full footing our own bill for a hundred and ninety-five inmates. Um, and I just don't think that's the direction we need to go, unfortunately. For a different discussion, but we're, we're at the point where we need to start looking in the future. You know, we've got, we've got bond paying off on the jail in another two years. Um, and I think we're gonna have to make.
Next year, we have this note and then next year?
I think that's correct. Maybe off one, but yeah.
I guess I still could use that money in my budget.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to look at, at, you know, where do we go for office space and storage space and jail space? Thank you for your, uh, for your attention again. My, my main concern is adding dispatcher and, uh, you got the numbers on what the county share of that would be to increase it and I appreciate your consideration.
I've always, yeah, I've always appreciated your approach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Sheriff. Commissioner Cooper, you know how to pause that recording?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess and we'll be back in five minutes.
Thank you, Judge.
Yes, sir.